This conference will now be recorded.
I think I just bought additional storage. I feel so wrong.
No, I don't know if I got the one that you said you sent out one for.
The regulations.
Regulations, yeah.
That was a while ago though, right?
What?
The rules.
Yeah, it was right after our meeting last time in August.
I'll do a search for it. It's amazing.
It should be online too.
Like an orientation or something.
But it sounds like, yeah, there are things that we should change and we can get that changed.
We can do the quorum with three of us. Alright, because we move in seconds, so yeah. That'll work. Alright. That's the meeting minutes of the agenda for today. Hold on, just a second. Okay, we'll go ahead and the meeting will be called at order at 5:34 PM. And this recording started?
Yep.
Okay, alright, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under back in this law.
Roll call please, please.
Sorry, I'll start Dinah McLean.
Here.
Counselor. I'm sorry, chair.
That's alright.
Dennis Stell, counselor.
Here.
And Stephanie Clark.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Planning Commissioners.
I'm used to it.
Yeah, that's fine. I have to get back in the swing of this, I haven't done this in a while either. Alright, so we have a call for the approval of the meeting minutes.
I shall move.
I actually had a couple of changes.
Okay.
First of all, the spelling of my name in two places, under 2.14 and 2.8. And then, we also had, I thought we had talked about the, for this agenda to put the planning commission rules and regulations on it so that we can adjust it. So that was missing from the minutes as well.
Okay, I should, I sent it after the meeting instead of attaching it to the minutes.
Yeah, or adding it to the minutes to say that we were going to talk about it in the next meeting.
Okay.
Anyway, any other changes from anybody that?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the two changes?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried to approve the meeting minutes with the two changes. Thank you. And just one more note about meeting minutes. I'd like to add on there, like, you know, for discussion as a separate, like, line item. Like a 2.14 would be the, you know, to be discussed in the next meeting and then 2.14 be the signature or 1.5.
Okay.
Maybe in the future we can add that on that.
Sure. For the actual agenda or the minutes?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can cover it.
Okay.
That way we don't forget things. Alright, next up is public comment and I'd like to open the public comment for discussion on things related to the plan.
Probably over to one of these mics, I'm afraid, if that's not set up, so yeah.
Yeah.
Pick one.
Mike. Okay, can you hear me? Is that good? Okay, so my name is Celeste Monroe. I haven't met, I've met a few of you, not all of you. I live at 2142 East Gather. I have, over the course of the past couple of months since the public.
Can you move that mic a little closer to you? Sorry.
How's that?
Yeah, it's better.
Okay, for the past couple of months, since the public hearing for Vineyard Vista, I've been attending and speaking about neighborhood concerns at City Council. And two of the primary ones that were the concern of the neighbors that were directly around my home and that it's, which is, will be a cut through up into the Vineyard Vista subdivision, were traffic and road conditions and then stormwater runoff. And tonight, we've come prepared to talk to you more about the traffic concerns and road conditions. You know, you just, you just have to drive through our neighborhoods and you can see that a lot of our roads are in sometimes poor, but mostly fair condition. You know, it kind of looks like an abstract painting with all of the rubber seal cracking that's running through. One of the big concerns that we have particularly is big trucks coming through, heavy weighted construction trucks riding on those roads and degrading them faster than they should be degrading, just because that, those heavy weights on top of those cracks, they're at greater risk of opening them up and redoing some of that damage. We, I attended the last city council meeting and saw that you guys have proposed a transportation benefit district for the city of La Center, which will add some little incremental component to the sales tax. And that money will then get used for road maintenance, but road repairs are expensive and I imagine it's going to take a little bit of time to build up a fund. Our, what we'd really like to see happen is that we take more proactive measures to calm the traffic and set some restrictions in the neighborhoods so that we can get those roads to last as long as they possibly can and delay any minor and/or major repairs because of the truck traffic. So, let's see, what else did I want to talk about? I talked about that.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
My understanding is that they're going to be using primarily the access to this new property off of Aspen, or as it goes around the corner. But as you know, as you're right, there's a, it's coming down into the development.
Well, we had, we had a couple of neighbors speak at the city council meeting about this. When they were doing the construction on Stevens Hills, they took the most expedient route up the hill. So if they were following a bus, they cut through the neighborhood. And they would either turn right on Southview or turn right on Heritage and then come around 18th and access Stevens Hills up there. So I think, I don't really think that the honor system is working, but we don't have anything published for them either that tells them you should, you know, trucks need to stay to this route. Neil will talk a little bit more about that. We've done some research into what Battleground does. They have a pretty comprehensive code in this area. He'll talk to you about that. But what we're trying to advocate is, can we solve this through some code changes and some inexpensive types of investments, right, in traffic calming measures, right, so that we can keep the trucks off the city streets and contain to Aspen and North Fork the way that they should be going? And then, I mean, the other issue that we have and that we will have in the future is we still have a lot of people speeding and not stopping at stop signs. Neil and I will be the first one to say that we do not always stop at the stop sign at the bottom of our own hill, right? Sometimes you lose your focus and you slide right through it. That's a really congested little, you know, box right there with bus zones and things like that. And I'm sure that there are other points in other areas of the neighborhood that would benefit from some traffic calming as well.
One of the things I might recommend is if you meet with our Public Works Director and perhaps our Sheriff Commander, is that there may be some signage that can be put up.
Neil's going to talk to you about that.
In regards.
So, so let's not steal his thunder.
Signage that can be put up to help address this.
Yes.
We have used that in the city at different times and I really don't know how successful it was, but I think it's probably more successful than not having something.
Right.
But anyways.
Well, there, I mean, certainly I think that there is being clear on what's neighborhood streets versus three-way streets. We need definitions around that, you know, we'll talk about that. But also, signage is probably the cheapest way to do this and if it, if it's, I think, done in the right way, the benefits could be getting there. But we have to, you have to have code to back it up because if they ignore the signs, then you get the sheriff's department involved and tickets will be issued, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Neil Johnson, 2142 East Gather. Excuse me. So, piggybacking on what my wife was just talking about, I did review the, much of the code for several of the cities in the state of Washington. And the one that I looked at more closely is the one for Battleground because they seem to have theirs a little more spelled out. They had a lot more details regarding truck routes and traffic calming and the definition of streets and the kind of things that, more definition type stuff. So let's see here. So they have a section in their code specifically addressing truck routes. And it defines things like what a truck is, which that seems kind of silly, what is a truck? So a partial description of why I pulled out of their code is, it's a vehicle whose body weight or combined body and load weight exceeds 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but just a dump truck that's unladen could weigh 26,000 pounds. Right?
That's probably empty.
Right, exactly, exactly. They also have in their code where the established truck routes are. And they actually have a map that says, here is the truck routes. And of course, they have exceptions like emergency vehicles, school buses, delivery vehicles, garbage collection, that type of thing. So there are exemptions to that truck route. Let's see here.
Do you have the code number?
I've sent you all this stuff. I don't have it, I don't have it on here, but I know this particular one, I'll send it to you guys. Because one's like 10 point something, others 12, I don't remember exactly, but I, I can send this, send that to you. Uh, let's see here. They also have a map that they published showing, okay, thanks. They also have a map published that shows where the truck route, truck routes are. Because obviously Battleground's a little larger than our town, so they have several different routes that, streets that can go down. And I can send that as well. Because that's actually separate from, that's like an exhibit, so it's separate from the code itself. So I had to dig around and find that. What else do they have? Oh, and a big one, they have street signs informing the truck operator where traffic is prohibited. So I haven't been there, so I don't see it, but I'm sure they said, you know, local traffic only, no trucks allowed, that type of thing. And so what that can do is that can go to the point where if a truck goes down a street that's not supposed to go down, then that's where the citation can occur. So for non-compliance, and I think their citations are, if I remember correctly, it's like 200 bucks for non-compliance with a truck driving down a street that it's not supposed to be. By comparison, in La Center, we have a couple of signs that says regarding trucks over 60 feet in length. And there's one coming in, I think there's another one right after you get around the, the traffic circle. But that's pretty much it. Let's see, Battleground's code also has a section that defines in great detail different street types and potential traffic calming measures for each. And they actually, they require that traffic calming measures be planned and implemented for all residential streets and new developments. And that plan must include public and private streets adjacent to the development. So if you're developing a new, you know, you have new development, traffic calming measures have to be in that development, but also properties adjacent to it. So in our instance, on Gather, when they come out of that development, there needs to be traffic calming measures on Gather as well. And they have, and they listed a lot of examples of what traffic calming measures are. And two of the simpler ones are signage. Basically, one that says, what does it say? Local, where's it? Residential street. Or it could say the local access only. And so that way, that's also another indicator for a truck driver that I can't go down this street. Or I should not go down the street, otherwise there's going to be consequence. What's that? The eyeball, that was, I looked at that one, that one was, you have the little, where's the, the little speedometer thing at the, I like to have, whoops, excuse me. Like that with the bridge and down by the police station here. So that's, that's something too, but that's obviously a little more involved. But that is something you can do. And something else they do too, or they, they say you can do too, is as you're coming into the neighborhood, they actually have the street narrow. And so by doing that, the car has to slow down in order to get through that narrow opening. I thought that was kind of interesting. I'd never thought of that one before. And one of the, of course, they have speed bombs, but no one wants speed bombs because those things are kind of ugly. Absolutely, one way or another. So those are, again, that's part of the, part of their, their code. And I'll send you that, all that's right in there. I sent print the whole thing out, this is like 40 pages long.
We can just send the link though.
Yeah, I can send the link too, yeah. What else do I have here? Also, and by comparison, for La Center, we have a similar section that defines types of streets, but it's not really fleshed out as much as there's, they have, again, they have a whole section that talks about all these different kinds of streets, collectors and it's just, it's, they have, and they actually have pictures showing what types of, you know, street, you know, the sidewalk and where the traffic bike, they have a whole, it's pretty impressive actually. Lastly, I feel that by fleshing out our code, it will help us define our community. Because otherwise, it's just kind of applying my seat of pants. It will show that, show what we value and what we will not tolerate. Like we talk about trucks that's driving wherever they want to drive because they're being inconvenienced.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Let me ask, let me add to that a little bit. One of the things we had a situation when they were building the development just north of Foothill Estates, particularly the trucks going up Aspen, that was not, and so there was a, this meeting with the developer slash builder of that property, putting forth our concerns. And they actually did some things to, to help that process. One of the things I would recommend, if you're part of a homeowner's association, is that having a group meet with the developer slash builder with these, with these concerns, because they may just say, hey, we understand and we're going to stay out of your neighborhood. But there may be some exceptions during the building phase where that is improbable, you know, impossible perhaps, but, but not as the norm. So that's, I think, if you go forth and at least step forward and talk to the developer slash builder of that development and let them know, that would be a first, I think also a good, a good community step also forward. Not just having code that says enforce the code, but having that communication sometimes is even better than the code. If we can actually get some kind of agreement with the developer on what the concerns are for your community.
Yeah.
They, they may just step forward and say, hey, we hear you and we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to abide by that. So I'm not suggesting we don't do anything else, but I would suggest that having that on the, on the list. Because again, if they come forward at some point and say, hey, look, it would have been nice for them to come up and talk to us, you know? And you say, well, we didn't, but we could. So that might be something you could check off that box that said you at least made that attempt to share the concern.
And I'm not, I'm not really, I'm not recommending the code change to be, you know, as a stick. It's more as a guideline, like you give your kid, right? And you give rules for your kid, right? It's not like, well, you know what, if you do this, you'll get a cookie. It's like, here, here's the rule, right?
Right.
So like I said, we're not doing it to be, you know, mean spirited, we're just doing it to say, here is, because we see it happening now, right? And who knows, some point in time, or you know what, I don't know if I'd like doing this today, so let me just take a shortcut today.
Bring what?
Human behavior, which is beyond our homeowners and that developers. People kind of do take the path of least resistance through the law.
Right.
And people are in a hurry these days.
Right.
It's, you know, there was a lot of public criticism, which to me was very touching, where people want to keep our streets or our kids compliant with the street. And they don't need to be worried about the truck that's barreling down on them. And that is important, I think what Neil was trying to say there at the end is these, that our streets are important to us and being able to be in our streets is important to us. And we want to take care of them and, you know, to be great.
And also, also where we are on Gather, there's no HOA, so we don't have that, no. We don't have HOA up there.
But you still can, you have residents here who come together just like this.
Yeah.
And do that. So, yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah. We're here for you. So I think we're going to get some information from you, right?
Yes.
And we'll, we'll take a look at that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We can always improve, we can always make some improvements, not to, we oftentimes get criticized for over, overkill on things, but I think there's an area here that's missing in our code that.
Well, and if Battleground has something, then you guys say, wow, we can adopt a lot of this stuff.
That'll make it easy, you know?
No, we're, we're going to grow. We're going to grow to whatever potential we can.
Right.
Autography, you know, we're not going to be the same as Reginald or whatever, but we're going to grow. So, that's planned, you know, and that's, I'm learning, that's what you guys do. I'm here, I'm learning who does what, so.
And we're, and we're not against, in fact, a lot of the code that we've put in place in our city has not been homegrown. We are very, we've gone out.
Willing to borrow, yeah.
We've gone out and done a lot of borrowing. Why not? I mean, if some, if it's proven and, yeah, they've got, you know, we can maybe tweak it a little bit, but, so I appreciate.
And basically for Battleground, I think that works much larger.
Right.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at the information and come back.
We probably have one.
Take a look at it too. Come back to.
Hearing the cost of what, you know, you're doing roads and where that money went to and how difficult it is with the number of roads we have. So it seems like, you know, about 13 years of watching Aspen, you know, it's a major river, and it probably always has been. But that road's already been chewed up, so why don't we just keep going on the one that's chewed up so you're fixing one road instead of.
Yeah, many of them.
And that's all just because of the, I mean, but it's a logical, financial plan as well, if you can make that work for the code to work.
What it also does too, as far as the ways too.
Sure.
With the trucks rolling down the street, that's going to be not very fun. Sorry, back up, the garbage truck's going to hit 65.
City of La Center for the last couple of years has gone after, over, after grant money from the state for Aspen and 10th.
Right.
For the reason, the roads are coming apart, you know, they're just falling apart.
And moving that to a different designation too, because it's more, I think, for Churro.
Yep.
And also, and the issue too, if you look at the slides of the vehicle, you look at a 25, 26,000 pound truck, that's just an unladen dump truck. And no truck will hunt, there's going to be, they go up there unladen, it's coming back fully laden. So that's going to be, who knows?
Oh, yeah. Sure.
So thank you for your comments. And do we have any other public comment for today? Alright, great, thanks.
Support staff. Support staff. Oh, we're glad you're here.
We, you know, I don't think a lot of us are into growth, it's just how we're growing a little bit.
Yeah, how do we still keep this? Yeah, and how do we keep that small town feel still growing?
What would my name be? I'm curious, I'm interested in my, I care.
That's good, thank you.
Alright, so 5:57, we're closing public comment. We have no public hearings today. I don't believe we have any unfinished business. And then the new businesses that you code, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about it a little bit. And I've been working on some ADUs with the new construction that we have coming in. Right now, to give an attached ADU and accessory dwelling unit, if anybody needs to know, or wants to know. Right now, it's a type 2 review, so it has to go, it's a four, about a three to four week process for a pre-application conference. And then it has to go through a type 2 review, which is going to be noticed. And all the neighbors within 150 feet will receive a notice and it can take up to 78 days. And so most other jurisdictions do it as a type 1 review and so it's a maximum of 42 days. For the building permit, I am not sure how many, if we have other ADUs out there that have not been permitted. The jurisdiction I came from, we were on top of it and we did a review on every single ADU, especially attached ADUs. I wanted to see if, if maybe we revamped the code for a type 1 review instead of a type 2 review, if that would be something, since it's in allowed use already. If that's something that you would feel comfortable letting us review and see, like a code change could be warranted. I did notice a code change happened like a couple of years ago for the ADU, but.
Well, yeah, we've been looking at it over the last several years and then the state stepped in and said, thou shalt allow.
Yeah.
So it's allowed.
That changed some things.
Yeah.
So in other words, you're no longer allowed to say, you can't do it. But yeah, so, yeah, state continues to will their club on.
I wanted to back up for a minute. We didn't have, did we have any callers today?
We have no callers.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Alright, so for the ADU section, what's the primary differences between the type 1 and type 2 review?
It's basically, it's, one is a pre-application conference, which there's a fee and a timeline. And then a type 2 review can be up to 78 days for the review time and a type 1 is 42 days. A type 1 also does not notice the neighbors. But a lot of times, like I have a few ADU applications right now in a brand new subdivision and we don't have any neighbors yet in the subdivision because it's new. And so it's primarily the developer getting the notice. But that's not saying that, let's say your next door neighbor wants to have an ADU, they want to convert their basement into an accessory dwelling unit, then you would not be, you would not receive a notice. So, you know, I want to know what everyone's feelings are as far as that goes, if you would prefer to have a notice. I, yeah.
I think a notice would be helpful.
I think we've generally, we've generally moved in that direction that said not to go over, you know, not to go overboard, but I forget what. Unfortunately, one of our guys that are, was on our commission here, had all this stuff in his brain, Dennis Nutbrock. And he could pick him, but there were, I forget how many fees or whatever it was from that property, or if it was X number of dwelling units around there, so that we were being, you know, good, good neighbors, you know, and giving them opportunity to at least be heard on that. So I think, I think, don't you agree that we should, we should, what do you think on that, Stephanie?
And so are we just talking about existing homes adding an ADU into their structure or are we talking about a separate? Or are we talking about a separate structure being built on?
Either one.
Either one. Either.
So if you're building on your lot, that would still be developed under regular committing codes and things. But that could be such, we're not saying let's just skip that step because it's an ADU.
No.
As not a single family.
Right.
So neighbors, I wouldn't need to be worried that all of a sudden my neighbor across the street is going to just do this like pop-up shanty shack. That doesn't happen by, by the same rules we did when we built our home.
Exactly.
And it's one ADU, and, and attached and detached, you can have a total of one, or you can have one of each?
You?
No, just total of one.
Yes. And, and this jurisdiction, it's only one. I know that there are jurisdictions that allow two now. Yeah, Park County allows two.
But I think just giving the opportunity for them to express like coming here and just saying, is that going to block my view? Or is that going to, you know, what, what's that going to do? At least be able to speak.
Is it going to do the?
Speak before, before someone puts the gavel down, you know? And I think that's what we want to be sure that we, we aren't somehow doing things here.
Is there a way to differentiate whether or not it's going to change the exterior facade of the house or not? So like my basement, nobody would know if I've had an ADU on my basement because you can't see in my basement. Or versus somebody doing an addition where it changes the front. I mean, is there a way to differentiate? Like this is just an ADU going into a basement, or this is already an existing bedroom versus we're adding onto the house. Would that matter as far as the review?
I don't think so.
And the code section does. It allows you a certain facade. You have to have matching every, you know, like most ADUs, you're not going to know if you drove by somebody's house that they have an ADU. And that's what the code is meant for.
The ones that are in your home usually call a mother-in-law, that's not appropriate anymore, but.
Right, right, yes. And so there was, you know, I'm sure there's several ADUs that are out there that nobody even knows exists in there. And, but times are changing, too, where people can't, you know, afford some, you know, maybe their older kids need to live out their house. So different things are going on and a lot of the builders are doing them.
Or caretakers.
Exactly. Yeah.
No, it's, it's a great idea.
But yes, I mean, if you guys are more comfortable with a notice going out to 150 feet and keeping the code as is.
Okay, what do we say in there today? What do we say how notification on there?
The code says 150 feet for notification.
There's a separate code for notifications outside of the ADU.
Yes, it is. Yeah, so I didn't print off the notice section. I only printed off the ADU for you, Dennis. Or for everybody, not just you.
That's usually, pretty much in our area, that's pretty much three lots around. That's probably two and a half lots or whatever around the property perimeter.
If, yeah, some of the smaller subdivisions that are maybe 7,500 to 10,000 square feet, that, that might be, you know, a chunk of, it could be like 30 people.
So you're saying it's not in this particular code, it's referenced?
Um, so it just talks about it being a type two review. It doesn't say how many days. I didn't print off the type two notice. Or, yeah, or the, yeah, type two application requirement. But it is 150 feet for that. And I wasn't thinking about the, when I printed it off, I was only thinking about the ADU and the, the actual review type. But that's what I really wanted to talk about, was the review type versus.
I'm not sure, we ought to talk about maybe, I don't know, 150 feet, just doesn't seem, maybe that could be.
So that is what, and maybe that's something else at a different meeting that we bring up. All type two reviews are 150 feet. So with a 150-foot radius every, so if you have a type two site plan where they're going to build a gas station next to your house, it's 150 feet. Anything with a type two is 150 feet and a type three is 300 feet.
Which is what impacted the, like the Vista View HOA.
Okay.
Or in your Vista, I think it was 200 feet versus 150 for the type two.
And with all due respect, if the neighbor doesn't want their neighbor to build an ADU, I mean, is that going to make a difference if you're sending notice to 150 feet and the neighbor says, well, I don't want them to? I mean.
Yeah, that just, that just says, that just says that they have an opportunity to express. They, they probably will not, they will not win usually. But they have a chance to say, here's why I don't want you to do that. And maybe, and maybe it will, it may have that effect, but if everybody's done their due diligence and they're, and they're, and they're neighborly, they're probably going to do something that's not going to cause, cause an issue. But we don't, yeah, we, we can't, we don't know everybody's, how everybody's going to act on this.
I mean, there's the other question, like if you have, if you bought a house with a larger lot size, because you wanted the space between yourself and the neighbors, now you're built, your neighbor's building in a detached ADU, how does that impact the neighborhood?
Right.
And is that something that we need to consider in the ADU code or not, too?
Well, that's what the, that's what the review process would, would allow for them to.
You can have feedback. You still can't stop it because there's nothing in the code that says that.
And I'm, and I'm not sure we want to necessarily stop it, but I think people need to really have an opportunity.
To speak up.
Speak up because not having something in there like 100 and even 150 feet, if that wasn't in there, I mean, that doesn't give anyone any opportunity to express their desires or feelings or concerns or whatever. And I think we ought to, I think we've always kind of felt that the community needs to have an opportunity to.
Because it is about 150 feet and it also will notice it, you know, out on the board.
Yeah, right.
And here's the other side of the plate, too. It's my property, I should be able to do it.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, saying, my property, because it was a certain way, so, you know.
Yeah, they can ultimately, as long as, yeah, they're doing their due diligence, like you said, and building an appropriate structure. And which is all I think everybody wants. I mean, I don't want to be in any of those businesses. It's a very huge desire, but just want an appropriate structure, so.
Do we need to take any action on this tonight?
Um, no, not if you want to keep it exactly how it is right now and keep it as a type two review. I'll leave it.
This is kind of what we had discussed before, so I, I have no problem with it, sure.
I, I think we should leave it, I think, you think, and you think, yeah. So I don't know if we have to take a vote on it, if they have concerns, whether it's sparking concerns or noise concerns, it needs to be heard.
Do you want, do you need a vote on that?
Um, I don't, I, I don't think so because we're going to keep it exactly how it is. I just wanted to talk about it because I.
Sounds good.
Several applications last month with the new homes going in. Builders are wanting to build a attached ADU. Most of them, you will not, you'll look at the house and you won't even know there's an ADU, but if.
What about, what about putting a clause in there about new construction? Maybe it could be a type one review. Because if there's nobody, you know, if the new development, there's nobody around there, we don't.
Because the way they're building them is for their HOA and it's all going to look perfectly pristine anyways. They're going to follow, yeah, their guidelines.
So maybe that's what we would change.
If there's an HOA involved, then they, they get the vote, too. And they have a big vote.
What qualifies, really, because I don't want to put you off, but here, I'm just curious, the difference between an ADU versus you've just remodeled a portion of your house to make it second living quarters? Does it, does it have to have an oven? Does it have to have a kitchen? Like what qualifies it to be an ADU versus just a mother-in-law apartment?
So the additional dwelling unit, I think, I don't know where the definition is, there's.
I'm just curious. Some county that has a living room, kitchen.
Right, right.
You know, so I was just curious what the difference is between, I just added on a bedroom to my house, or is that an ADU?
So that, that wouldn't be an ADU. Usually it's kitchen facilities, but.
Kitchen with the, and I know the oven has a lot to do with it because you're permitting or whether or not.
You're, you're correct.
A meter and, so, yes.
It's a living space.
Definitely. Is that something that you can come back with in our next meeting, then? The definition of an ADU and then also maybe a quick, in the chapter, the ADU chapter, just saying for renting developments with no new neighbors, then it would require a type one review or something like that?
That would be great, yeah.
New construction to be completed within that application year wouldn't need to be approved by anyone.
Right.
Yeah, as long as there are no existing residents in that community or that development, maybe something like that.
Okay.
Or adjacent to that property. You have to phase it just right because otherwise.
Well, the builder isn't going to have permission from the neighbors to build the plan that they already have, their spec plan. Their plan that when they, you know, clear that lot.
It, it may be something that we can add to the, the decision, the final decision. We can add that in there that says if you want to build with the, if you would be okay with that, we could maybe add something in the decision that says ADUs will be allowed without further permitting or, you know.
In certain circumstances, yeah.
Because the builders' plans have already been approved by this, you know.
The one thing that I'm concerned about, then, if we do, do go that way, well, and this is actually kind of concerning before, is the, the maximum size, no, it wasn't that. An ADU building footprint shall not be included in the maximum lot coverage calculation of the underlying zone. That does bother me a little bit.
So if you have 5,000 square foot lot, 2,000 square foot house, leaving out a 900 square foot ADU, and now you're over the max?
Um, no, they said that it's not, ADUs are not allowed in, on any person smaller than 5,000 square feet. And a lot of the ones out there are 7,500. So then where does that come in with like, you know, we need trees in the neighborhood, right? With level warming and everything and plant like shelter, herbs and the environment and provide shade and help cool the ground.
And there's only.
There are, but it's 10 foot from lot length, so maybe you've got 20 foot between houses and your fire codes, what, 10 feet from the house? It's supposed to be your fire perimeter, so.
There's also a lot coverage maximum amount.
Yeah, that's pretty well covered.
Yeah, but it's, this one says it's not included, the ADU building.
Oh, yeah, I think that you're right, yeah.
And I'm wondering if we should take that out? Or adjust it somehow?
I think that, I mean, this, this was written like in 2022. So I think that we would want to think about it a little bit because there might have been a reason why the planning, I, planning commission and, you know, why everybody came up with that, but we can definitely take a look at it.
Yeah, let's review that 4E, 18 dot 247 dot zero by zero, 4E in our next meeting. And this also gets back to the town wanting to retain that small town, for reveal, rather than being a bunch of buildings everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we do have a few things to look at for the ADU code.
We do, yeah.
All right, anything other special on the ADU code?
No, no.
All right, next one up is reports. Anything?
There are no reports this time. There will be, I hope, next. But, yeah.
Okay, and then 2 dot 10, planning commissioner and alternate comments, so.
So we have received a couple of applications for an alternate and those are being reviewed still at this time. And so I don't, unfortunately, I don't have an answer this meeting, but I hope to by the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Commissioner Clark, was there anything that you wanted to bring up in this meeting?
I'm good.
Right, I did have a couple of things.
All right.
Um, I noticed in all, all the comments at the city council meetings and things. And just from being a concerned citizen, actually, I have this concern about the excavating that was going on at Stevens Hillside and how tall they built up and filled in the dirt. I'm really concerned that it's not going to be stable for a long time. I know they're having drainage issues there, too. And I noticed.
You turned it out to the right of the main street going into the property.
Yeah, anywhere in there. It's just crazy, like, you know, more than two stories worth of filter, it seems like, on some spots. So I wanted to take a look at, there was an excavating crew.
Okay.
And I don't remember what it was. I think it was Battlegrounds Excavating or Vancouver's, I'll get it back to you. But maybe we can take a look at that to see what we can do to mitigate.
And your concern is about all that, that?
Um, just the stability of the houses that are built on top of it. You know, this filter, it's, it's not very, you know, dirt settles. It's new, but, yeah. And then just seeing like all the runoff that was coming off those hillsides and the mini little landslides. I don't think it was, you know, I, I just.
Yeah, the biggest one about below where there's the existing home that's like 900 years. It is extremely scary. I actually have reserved a lot below that and backed out. Once I came there, I kept seeing the degrading hillside, degrading hillside. I was like, no, thanks, don't want to have something underneath that.
Yeah, yeah, and just, yeah, so again, I'll say.
Vegetation is what they told me, you know, and it's for the homeowners to care for, that's not for the landscaping, HOA do either.
Oh, wow.
The vegetation is supposed to hold all that places, what they.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I said, no, thanks.
Yeah. So let's look at, I can't remember, it's excavation or something else if they called it. So it was one of my concerns. And also the tree, I wanted to take a look at again.
Okay.
We have the code in there to say, you know, trees are bigger in certain sites that, you know, they need to be permitted by the city to get rid of them or whatever, if they want to. But I know when I was up in Edmonds, I was looking amongst these houses and they have these huge fir trees in there. I'm like, why isn't the city of the center do that instead of like clear cutting the trees? And so I was wondering, and I don't know, in your work history, have you run into anything where they've actually allowed the big fir trees to stay and built the houses in between?
You know, the developers are the ones that want it cut, right? Because it's easier for them to work around and they don't have to worry about, you know, where they're knocking up their trucks and everything like that. And I'll say, I ran into the exact same situation where it's generally just a clear cut. They just come in and, and as sad as it is, unfortunately, I haven't, you know, done it any other way. But I like what you're thinking and I, I would appreciate that. Some trees would be left. But when you see these beautiful, of these barren developments, it's like, why couldn't they have just left some trees? And if you're a person who's buying there, you're like, why couldn't they have just left some trees?
And I know there is like, I mean, I think it, you, you need like a windbreak tree to protect the other trees kind of thing. So there's a science to it, but there's also Puget Sound, what was it? It was stormwater and trees and, out in general, stormwater. I mean, there's, so there's got to be some.
I think their issue is obviously with expediting the completion of their construction and digging all the sewer lines and gas lines and laying electrical and cable, the trees just get in their way, so they look at it like.
It's also degrading our country, too.
That, that question came up years ago in Foothill Estates with the developer. And Craig Moody, and so there was, there were a few trees. But the question came up kind of like, why, why do we have to take them all down? One of the things that they, they said was, is liability. If, if the developer comes in and puts homes around these trees and they start falling onto homes. And that, that happened here in the Foothill still, in fact, just west of Foothill Estates. They had a tree that got, got infected and toppled into the home and crushed an ADU, but a garden shed and also hit the corner of one of the, one of the homes there because it wasn't taken down. And it should have been taken down. And now they're taking them down and gone in the review of them. So I think this, that's, the tree, the tree thing is good, I think, but is, I think also the type of trees. There's some trees that are going to be around a lot longer and are a lot more stable and healthier or whatever. That could withstand, you know, the wind and all that kind of good stuff. But anyways, Craig indicated that part of the issue is liability issue that they had to consider.
Yeah, so.
Welcome.
So it'll be interesting. Kind of get some of the code that maybe we could go with and see. That's a good point, too. Thank you for joining us. We're just discussing additional planning commissioner comments. So I was thinking, talking about some of the things I'd like to bring up. And then I think there was a third one that I wanted to do, but I'll save that for the next meeting. So Commissioner Jones, do you have anything, any comments that you'd like to bring to today's meeting?
No, I, I just had a couple of questions.
No, I, I just had a couple of questions on the location of, of things, but like, well.
Go ahead.
Like just if it's in your subdivision or something, I, I've, I've seen in the news kind of response to that. But I hadn't, I don't recall ever seeing that in our plans of upcoming things, so. I was just more curious of where is that actually and what's the status? And, and I didn't also get, you know, I, I was curious that we didn't have the packet. At least I couldn't see the packet ahead of time. I just saw the, the agenda and it didn't have any of the.
Oh, the attachment.
The attachments in it, so.
Yeah, that was my other question on that. Thank you for bringing that up. The agenda and attachments, were they posted? Because aren't they supposed to be like 13 days, posted 13 days before the meeting or something like that?
Not 13 days. It might be, I think that.
The meeting has to be advertised 13 days ahead of time, but then the meeting agenda should be posted so many days before the meeting?
That, I think there might be so many days. This time it did not go. It's usually typically we post it like Friday before, the week before. But I didn't this time because I was waiting for the CAC and for WSP to get back to me. And so, yes, normally we would post it by Friday of the previous week. And it would be out here and it would be on Civic, on the portal too. Yeah.
Okay. And then the, then your visitor, your question on that, so the planning commission works on the municipal code in general. So we're not actually out there, once the codes are out there, we don't go out and like approve like.
Right, right. It wasn't approval, but it was more of the just, we, we usually had, we used to receive a report.
That listed.
That listed them and what was, what was happening.
The status.
The status of various.
And maybe that'll start again. We used to get that all of a.
I know, they cover it over in the city council meeting.
Oh, so have you? Yes, I do that for the city council meeting every month of would you like one?
We used to have it here also.
Okay, no problem. Nobody ever told me that, so I'd be more than happy to.
It was just one of the things I kind of looked for.
Okay, yeah. I, I do the report, so I'm more than happy to give it to you guys.
And include that in the, what he did also included is one of the agenda items and included it as an attachment that we could open up at all.
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
No.
I, I guess my other question that I kind of listed was, I know we're going through the ADU code, but is that looking at the things? I was curious where we are in the comprehensive plan because previous meetings used to be a lot about kind of updating code and things like that for the comprehensive plan, but hadn't seen any in that past couple of months, so.
That's a great question. So we have been working with WSP, the consultant, and with Clark County, and there's been a lot of, we have to have so much housing, so much middle housing and so many jobs. And so the way that it was all laid out, it wasn't, we were meeting to balance it out a little bit more. And so next month for the Planning Commission and the city council, we hope to have the new mapping and everything updated and we can get back on track talking about that to get that done. But unfortunately, there, there was a change in, in what we were doing. Our last meeting that we had brought up a lot of questions.
Yes.
And we want to make sure and answer all of those and get that all taken care of.
Yeah, and actually today, just if you can listen to the recording for today's meeting, get all the information on what we covered, but for the ADU, we just essentially decided, well, there were a couple of points that we wanted to discuss again in our next meeting.
I, I missed something. Was this supposed to start at 5:30?
Yes.
5:30.
Somehow I read 6:30 and I am sorry.
That's all right. Don't be sorry. And we did 6:30 for a very long time. And so.
Okay, somehow.
And that is, that is actually something else we talked about because it's going over the Planning Commission rules and regulations, like Dinah said. Because in the, in the code, it actually says 7:30 at the time, not 5:30. So that would be something that should be updated this time.
And then one last question, sign regulations was part of the packet?
Right, and I don't recall, I'm sorry, from the last meeting, somebody had asked about sign regulations. I don't know if there was a specific.
Someone asked, I think, for a copy.
Oh, yeah.
That they had said they would do me and turn them.
Yeah. Commissioners.
Had mentioned, yeah, there was something different than what we had, what had been originally discussed in that round in that area.
Thank you for bringing that up. And this is why I said on the meeting minutes add that in to be discussed. So we'll continue that discussion in the next meeting. So thank you for bringing that up.
Shock there, Commissioner Clark.
All right, anything else?
Again, maybe this isn't so much a, this, or but, on the Lock Creek Meadows things, I, I noticed even on the ADU or in the sign regulations, some, some of the things, but they, they show boundaries of some of the things. But it looks like that subdivision is technically just in the UGA, it's not in the city limits? Or has that been incorporated into city limits?
Are you talking Lockwood Meadows or Lock?
Lockwood Creek Meadows, which is just below the Heritage Country Estates, just across this kind of.
Right, because some people say Lockwood Meadows and I've heard Lockwood Creek. Lockwood Meadows is within the city of La Center's jurisdiction. I would have to give a map or to verify that.
Yeah, I was just curious because I, I was looking at one of the maps that showed the thing kind of jumped up to the boundary of where the Heritage Country Estates was. But the one right below it was just with the UGA boundaries and so was.
So I'll look forward to seeing the map in the next meeting. I came through the city, so I'm pretty sure. All right, anything else?
I'm sorry. That was short, as I guess I can.
Sure, you did. You know how to do a meeting.
Okay, so it looks like in our next meeting, we'll be doing the revised housing element for the October PC meeting.
Yes, that's it. We'll have WSP and they'll be speaking during that.
Okay. And then is there anybody that will not be able to attend our next meeting in October?
That's going to be on the 8th, okay. As far as I know, I'm here.
As far as I know, I should be around. Also double checking, 5:30 or 6:30?
5:30.
Yeah, 5:30 or better.
It will be at 5:30.
It will, yeah.
That's all right. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second? Any opposed? Any abstained? All in favor? Motion carries to adjourn.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.